Spanish spelling.
Capron. Gretkin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Reddick.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
I'm ready, get ready.
I make a motion we go into closed session to the city council to discuss the purchase or sale of a particular real estate where premature disclosure would be likely, could be reasonably expected to increase the price to prop, the city would have to pay for that property or reduce the price the city would receive for that property.
Second.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Reddick.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Capron.
Oh, no.
See, he looks like he's not paying attention.
I make a motion we go into closed session of the city council to discuss strategy with council about matters where litigation is imminent because public disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage position of the city in that litigation. Ron, do you have something to say?
Second.
Second.
Tried, Ron. I tried to help you.
Aye.
Reddick.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Capron.
Yep.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Second.
So tell them that in America we sell it with an A and in Mexico it's called a G.
Reddick?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
We adjourn the close session.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
We'll be back at 4:15. Thank you for that.
City Council, this is the schedule in our public meeting for the elections.
Here. Gretkin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Reddick.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
We stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance, please. United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an interview for Jack Briscoe for the Art Center Board of Trustees. Jack, would you like to come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the Art Center?
Well, I've been in the Sioux City Camera Club for quite some time. Fernandez and Todd Barons have done with the great displays and showings that the Art Center has had. I remember being at Camera Club when we had the old Art Center by the Cameo Theater.
That looks pretty good.
And I appreciate your involvement in the community and continued involvement. Thank you for staying involved, too. I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
That it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to the consent agenda, which is Items Three through Fourteen D. You can assume the pass unanimously unless the council member asks for a separate vote. If you want to speak on any of these items, please come forward as I read them. State your name and address so it can be entered into the record. If you want to speak on an item now on the agenda, come up at the end of the meeting under Citizen Concerns. Again, state your name and address so it can be entered into the record. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is a reading of the City Council minutes of February first, two thousand sixteen. Four is a resolution approving the applications of the MPO STP and the MPO STP TAP for fiscal year two thousand twenty and directing the city managers to submit letters returning FY two thousand sixteen step funds allocated to transportation infrastructure around Mile marker one thirty-eight and FY two thousand eight STP TAP funds currently allocated to Perry Creek Greenway Trail. Five is a motion approving Jeremy Pig to the Human Rights Commission. Six is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Sioux City Board for a one-half ton crew cab pickup for the CMG. Seven's a resolution approving the contract with Mark Alban issue sync for the Fifth Street and Court Street paving repair project. Eight is resolutions adopting plans and specifications and a formal contract for the Bridgeport West Sewer Improvement Section C Lift Station Improvements Project. Nine is the civil penalties and suspension. A is a resolution setting a hearing on a proposed civil penalty of three hundred dollars against Hy-Vee forty-five-hundred Sergeant Road for violation of the Iowa cigarette laws. B is a resolution setting a hearing on a proposed civil penalty of three hundred dollars against Live Laugh and Shop forty-four-hundred Sergeant Road, number five hundred, for violation of the Iowa cigarette laws. C is a resolution setting a hearing and a proposed civil penalty of three hundred against Spencer Gifts four hundred Sergeant Road, number five twenty-two, for violation of the Iowa cigarette laws. D is a resolution setting a hearing on a proposed civil penalty of three hundred against Sam's Club forty-two oh one South York for violation of the Iowa cigarette laws. E is a resolution setting a hearing and a proposed fifteen hundred dollar civil penalty and a thirty-day suspension for the cigarette permit issued to Hy-Vee Gas thirty-three thirty-three Gordon Drive for violation of the Iowa cigarette laws. Ten are actions relating to property. A is a resolution inviting proposals for the lease of land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Hangar One LLC and setting a hearing for fifty-three ninety-one Pershing Street. B is a resolution inviting proposals worth trying to sell right now, correct?
No. Jeff Eaton, Community Development Operations Manager. This property is up in the new retail center up off of Floyd. And this provides power to both the new strip mall.
Can't be thirty-one thirty, Jeff.
The strip mall and the property that we own to the north.
Well, the thirty-three hundred block is where the Casey store is, correct? Isn't it? Or is that the third?
That's Thirty-third Street comes down the hill.
Yeah, the legal description's in the back. It shows we actually work with.
I just noticed that I was not, I'm sorry, I should have called you. I just noticed as I read it. That's not thirty. Thirty-three hundred I know is the Casey store.
Thirty-three ten.
That's two blocks away.
It's two blocks away. You're way off. The legal description's fine. You just want to correct the address later, but. C is a resolution consenting to a lease assignment between ACIS and Jim Spondert for Hangar Building eight oh two two, located at twenty-five hundred Keokuk Avenue at the Sioux Gateway Airport. Eleven are total checks. Approve the total checks issued for the reporting period of January two thousand sixteen in the amount of seven million fifty-four thousand seven hundred and two dollars and fifteen cents. Twelve is an application for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits. See the list come forward if you have any questions. And thirteen are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list and come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items. What's the answer? Well, that'd be right. Must be Thirty-first Street, Pete, because the Walmart's thirty-one oh one.
No, that is Thirty-third Street. That goes down on the south side though.
How that could be thirty-one hundred up by the Walmart then?
I don't know.
I don't either. Okay. Passes five zero. Okay, fifteen's a hearing and resolution approving construction documents for the Eighteenth Street Bridge over the Floyd River Deck Replacement Project. I should have read receipt of minutes. Sorry, guys, but I don't think anybody's. Dan, did you have any corrections of the minutes?
I didn't today, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'll move fifteen.
Second. Sarah, I'm not getting a light unless you already. Did you get it? You're not lit up. I'm not lit up.
Probably broke it again, Rhonda.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Sixteen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specification, former contract, and estimated cost for the two thousand sixteen annual storm inlet rebuild project. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero. Seventeen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specification, former contract, and estimated cost of the two thousand sixteen manhole rehabilitation program, project. I'll move that.
Second.
I beat you by a second.
Synchronize seconding. I voted before you, though.
You always do. Thinking, Pete.
Passes five zero. Eighteen's a hearing and resolution approving plans, specifications, former contract, and estimated cost of construction of the two thousand sixteen river project, Grayson Mauslim facilities, maintenance facility, east-west pedestrian skywalk from seven oh seven Fourth Street to eight oh one Fourth Street, and the north-south pedestrian skywalk from seven hundred Fourth Street to seven oh seven Fourth Street. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero. Nineteen's a hearing and resolution approving plans, specifications, former contract, and estimated cost for the Riverside Pool Slide Structure Reaffurbish Project. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes four to one. Mr. Reddick voted no. Twenty's a hearing and resolution approving a proposal to sell and authorizing a city deed to vacate at forty feet of Grandview Park and that part of the vacated north-south alley of Budding twenty-eight hundred Summit. I'll move that.
Second. Are we about done with this?
This should just about wrap things up, Mayor and Council. We are just clarifying a little bit of work to do on the deed still. We're going to make just a couple minor changes to restrict so that no new residential structure or existing residential structure could be moved in. It's the preference of the Parks Department and as well as city staff not to have an additional house on this, but we would be okay with some sort of other structure, a secondary use.
Okay.
So that'll be the only thing. The deed that you have in front of you simply, it needs a little bit of additional language to clarify, thanks to Councilman Moore, that we don't want an existing structure moved onto that site.
Okay, so after we get this both in, we should be done with it? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Do we need a motion to amend or to add to the language of the proposed city deed?
Yes.
The current deed includes a deed restriction, which would not allow for a new residential structure to be built. If there's a desire for it to be tightened up or nothing else could be moved on, we can make it more specific if that is the request.
I'd like to make that motion, but you're clear, the Parks and staff, you're clear that accessory buildings can be built on this?
Correct.
Vacated portion of the Grandview Park?
Actually, the plans that he has kind of shown us.
Do them like a driveway?
The driveway would go on it, and possibly there would be a portion of the garage that would even be built on this parcel as well.
The garage is supposed to be towards the back part of the house, would it not?
Correct, but some of the garage may encroach right up to and maybe a little over that property line due to the grade change.
So I'll make a motion to amend to add existing residential structures to the deed restriction?
And so it would be your intent that, obviously, the city and council's intent that no residential structure of any sort would ever be placed upon that parcel?
Correct.
Okay.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Moore.
Aye.
Reddick.
No.
Scott.
I don't think so. No. I don't.
Capron.
I say I can't. I don't think it's big enough.
Explain this to me one more time so I got it right. So if he wants to put.
A house on the land, I'm just saying, that would not be allowed. And right now, the deed restriction says new residential structures.
Okay, so.
I don't want to bring anything. To me, it's just unneeded. I mean, if you look at the little segment of ground it is, if he's going to have a driveway, why would we want to restrict even a new one? What if his house burns down and he chooses to rebuild and make it even more acceptable to the city? We'd have already restricted him to that.
If I can read for the council what the language is in the current draft deed.
You don't want a house that's going to burn down.
It indicates this deed is also subject to the following deed restriction. No new residential structure shall be built on this property. This restriction shall apply to this deed and owner as well as any subsequent purchaser.
How about new or existing additional residential structure then, Mayor? Well, I don't, is it even big enough to put another house on?
No, not really.
Depends on if you acquire additional land or not.
Land that he acquired.
Depends on if you're building the house for your mother-in-law and how much you like her.
This is basically a request of the Parks Department that they didn't want a house.
Who's down? Is the park board going to be unwilling to at least look at that? I hope not. It doesn't matter. We're still voting. Go ahead. Are we, not everybody voted, did they?
Really been in the middle today.
Jeez, I tell you.
Rhonda tiebreaker.
Want two weeks on this, too?
I think I have to think on this one. Let me sit here. I just want to be fair to the posies, so.
I do, too.
So what you're saying would be a good thing for them or not?
They've accepted it, probably.
So if I say yeah, then that'd be good.
Yeah, they would accept. I mean, it's a residential structure. I'm just distinguishing between new and existing.
Okay, yes. Aye. Gretkin.
Aye.
Passes. Now on the regular. As amended. As amended. I already voted. I wish I would have, but that's fine. No, that's all right. Passes five zero. Twenty-one's an ordinance amending chapter ten point nine eight entitled Schedules of Municipal Code to Adopt New Traffic Schedules Relating to Traffic Control Devices Placed on City Streets. I'll move that.
Second.
You want to tell them what this means for the public?
Sure. Every year, the city council is asked to adopt a schedule of traffic control devices, bridge approaches, waits, and so forth. It governs culverts, viaducts, and wait embargoes in the city code. It's an update. It comes through the engineering department for anything that may have changed throughout the year. And what is attached to the proposed RCA and ordinance is the list of scheduled changes for the year. And I can go through those if the council would like to.
No, just some, when you, people, when you say traffic control devices, some people sitting at home will think there's a monumental change here. I want to make sure they understand it's not. I'll, is there anybody opposed, did that pass five zero? Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second. Reddick.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
I'll move second, or I'll move second, third.
Second.
Passes five zero. Twenty-two's a hearing and ordinance vacating various rights of ways lying in the Pleasant View addition. P and Z recommends approval. I'll move first reading.
Second.
Mayor and council, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this item by a vote of four zero. We have a couple members of the Nature Conservancy in the audience that would like to speak.
Hello. My name's Graham McGaffin. I'm the Lust Hills Project Director for the Nature Conservancy. Ed Sibley, supporter of the Nature Conservancy, is here with me. And we are, Mr. Mayor requesting and council members requesting vacancy of right of way as approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation.
Okay. Did you state your address? Could you state your address for the clerk?
My address, yes, Mr. Mayor. It's forty-five zero one Manor Circle.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sibley?
I'm Ed Sibley. Forty fifteen Sergeant Road. I've been a member of the Nature Conservancy for quite a number of years. What this really will do is add a few, I would say, square footies, maybe even a couple of acres at most, to the existing Sioux City Prairie. There will be no loss of tax revenues to the city. This is land that has been planted from clear back in the early part of there. But for all intents and purposes, it's not developable. Nobody would want to put a house on that bluff. There are no facilities available, so as a result, the city is losing nothing in this transaction except to get some land transferred over to the Conservancy. And that's basically what it's come down to. We're expanding the prairie to its logical, natural end on the east side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Move for the paper, it's worthless land, and we're gonna, we're gonna conserve it that way.
Well, for all intents and purposes, Keith, it's just what it boils down to, yes, but it's-
I live right over by it, I know right where you are.
Okay, but at least the thing is that when you think in terms of prairie, you're taking also pollinators, honeybees, monarchs, that type of thing. The area is specifically set up to be forever wild, and as wild as a prairie can be. The advantage, of course, of a prairie is that the city does not have to take care of it.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
And finally, I'd just like to thank Brent, who's excellent to work with through the process.
Me, we were very fortunate to find you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Passes five, zero, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
No, I'll move that.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Raddick?
Aye.
Move second and third.
Second. Twenty-three's a motion accepting the P&amp;Z Commission's approval of the proposed FY two thousand seventeen to twenty-one CIP regarding the conformance of proposed projects to the Sioux City Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you, the council, or the planning commission did vote on this unanimously, four, two, zero, with run recommendation that the funding for the comprehensive plan be maintained.
Would they have felt the same way if we don't approve the three hundred thousand to update the comprehensive plan?
Well, again, their one recommendation was to maintain that funding, so-
Not a doubt. Do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Twenty-four's a resolution approving a contract, K&amp;L Contracting, for the Cone Park Site Preparation Project. Move it.
Second.
Where are we expected to be on this?
And I do have a question on it, too. Does the price include stump removal?
No.
So, do we have any?
Yeah, Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. The plan was to come in with the, with the next set of bidding documents right after this, that would account for site grading and stump removal. If we issued it with this contract, there'd have to, we'd have to get another, another SWIP, another, another grading permit to remove the stumps properly, otherwise you'd be leaving six to eight inch holes.
Well, the plan was clearing, then grading, from the get-go.
Yes, this, that was the original intention, was to do the tree clearing and then come right back with the next project that would remove this-
And they say clearing, I can't remember their estimate, I think it was around a hundred and fifty, wasn't it?
Hundred and twenty-eight thousand for, for this contract.
But the engineer's estimate is, I think, is about a hundred and thirty-four?
Three, a hundred and thirty-three, so that's five thousand dollars less.
Okay.
You missed it by thirty dollars, you said a hundred and thirty-four.
It's a favorable bid.
Yes.
Mayor, I have a conflict of interest on this one, I'll abstain.
He had to put this after the prairie guys were here.
Passes four, zero, one, Mr. Moore abstains.
The engineer's estimate was one, one point four million, and the high estimate is twenty-four nine six, and the fellow that got it was one million ninety-five. There's such a big difference in, in prices here, like one, one point four million, I mean, that for the low, for the low bid, and we're going to, and the high bid is, what's the difference? How come it's so much?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Brad Pitts, interim water plant superintendent. If you look at the bidders, you know, it's nobody that's real local, so the bids that come in, a lot of times these companies will just bid on these projects to put a number in, in hopes that they get the, you know, that they get the low bid. So the engineer's estimate was one point four eight seven, and the base bid for EJ Chris was two point four nine.
So, but they're out of San Antonio, the high bid at two point four, and, and the low bids, one, one point nine five, one point zero nine five, I should say, and they're out of Georgia. So, I mean, it's, that makes me think, you know, what are we missing here? You know, we got one point four million dollar difference.
Yeah, I don't think we've, I don't think we're missing anything. It's just the, the nature of the bidding and where these companies are located out of, that's, that's about what we can say for that without actually talking to these companies and, and asking, you know, we looked over the recommendation letter thoroughly, and everything that we expect to be done is covered.
Well, we've seen this happen before, you know, we get all these change orders after we get the bid in, so, you know, it's, it's easy to put in a little bid and then start throwing in change orders, so.
Mayor and Council, Rick Mock, interim Public Works Director. If you remember, we had a similar situation on the Indian Hills Tank. It's really based upon a select, small group of people who do this kind of work, and how much work they have at the present time. We did have a big spread in the Indian Hills Tank project, took the low bid, and we had absolutely no change orders on that.
Was the low bid, who, who was it? Do you remember who had the low bid?
That was a firm out of Minnesota, Champion Coatings.
Oh, was, was it T-Mark?
And they didn't bid this project.
They did bid it, or they did?
They did not.
Oh, okay.
So kind of based upon, there's a small, select group of people that like to do this kind of climbing work and painting, and, and what the availability is of their staff at that time. We allowed long enough completion date on this project that they could fit it into a decent work schedule.
Okay, well, I just-
The other thing, Rhonda, is they line up work so they could have already have some Iowa work, and the other guys may not.
That's true.
They may already have crews planned for the area.
Just asking, so, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion on that?
Yes.
Twenty-six, a motion to reconsider the approval of the Consulting Service Agreement with DGR Engineering for the Design of the South Cypress Street Extension Project. I'll move it. Second.
One Ellis City Engineer, just wanted to see if you had any questions based on the information provided in the memo. Definitely able to answer any questions, and if you do reconsider this, we can discuss it more at the next-
How much of this is the Sioux City School District gonna pay? Have you negotiated the twenty-eight E yet?
We haven't gotten to that point. We had a meeting scheduled, but we delayed that, or we're rescheduling it after this is taken care of.
Why, why would that be? Once, once we have, I'm, listen, I'm not gonna get into a big argument about DGR today, but if it's really gonna be a twenty-eight E agreement, why don't we have a proposed twenty-eight E agreement to review as part of this deal? I mean, from the letter I got from Mr. Wells, I assumed we would have something in, on paper. You're, once you approve a contract, I am-
That was my question, too. Wouldn't it be more appropriate to have a twenty-eight E agreement before we approve this item?
Well, I think in the past, what we've done is the school district starts to do a design on, on school projects, and then after the fact, the city enters into the twenty-eight E agreement after the work has already been scoped out, and we then enter into that agreement based on that agreement, or the scope. We do have a company, they've seen those plans, and so they have an idea, and we have an idea of that relationship of what should go in the agreement. Like I said, we didn't have a chance to sit down with the school district to iron out the details of it.
See, what bothers me is when I, when I read the memo from DGR, it says, "This plan has been provided to school district with positive feedback. All of the survey and design work shown on school district property is included in the scope and fee that was provided to the city with the expectation that a twenty-eight E agreement will be approved," or will be drafted, but they sound like, DGR sounds like they've talked to the school board, and the school board says, "Yeah, we're, we're okay with this." But what happens if they're not okay? And I'm expecting, I guess based upon this, and I'm, I'm not even sure I understand the numbers totally, but it sounds like the way that they worded that we estimate the work to be done for the school district to be twenty thousand dollars. Yet, your, I think your memo, Glenn, said the additional price was, you had a seven thousand dollars and some cents?
That was, the, the seven thousand was for actually coordinating and drafting the twenty-eight E, and then the additional work needed for the lighting plan. It didn't include the additional work on the project, or on the school district's property itself. That's where the DGR memo goes into a little more detail of what the cost would be associated with that.
Well, and that's where I get a little confused, because they talk about the, in his, in DGR's memo, forty-seven ninety-seven is for limited construction administration work. And then they go down a little further, and they start talking about property owned by the school district, they'll have to, this includes right-of-way acquisition assistance, including plating work, property owned by school district, additional coordination with the property owner, school district, streetlight design and geotechnical services, and then they estimate that work to be fourteen thousand. And then when you go down it a little further in that paragraph, it talks about additional meetings with the school district to coordinate and determine scope and limits of the schoolwork, preparation of twenty-eight E agreement, and survey and design of improvements made on school district property, which I thought they were doing some of in the fourteen, and that's estimated as twenty thousand dollars. So to me, it looks like the school district might wanna cooperate at the level of thirty-eight thousand dollars versus twenty thousand dollars. But I don't know that because we don't have a twenty-eight E agreement.
Yes, yeah, Brian-
And maybe I'm not reading it all right, Brian.
Mayor and Council, Brian Wells, DGR Engineering, sixty-one fifteen Whispering Creek Drive. No, the, I guess the intent of the memo is to try to separate out, starting at the contract amount of one eighteen, and breaking down some of the things like construction services, we, we had limited, we broke that out, and then also broke out some of the work items that aren't typical to a normal street project, which is roughly fourteen thousand. I mean, a lot of the street reconstruction projects we do don't have streetlight design in them, not every contract we get have geotechnical in it. So, so those are non, what I call non-typical fees.
So if it were a typical street project, your last, well, it may not be the last sentence, but on, on the first page, it said it'd be roughly eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, if, if we didn't do work on the school property, and we didn't do streetlight design, and some of those things that we don't normally do, this would be an eighty thousand dollar contract.
So that's why I'm thinking this, well, actually, on, on this particular item, you didn't put in the amount on, on this action item like it was in the first week that we deferred it, and it was a hundred and eighteen thousand, four ninety-two. So I'm thinking, if it was a hundred and eighteen, and if it's a typical street project, it's eighty, is the city's, or is the school district's contribution then thirty-eight, or am I-
No, he's gonna get more money from the school district, I'm guessing now by what he's saying.
No, the, 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 the work to do on the school property is included in the one eighteen, just like on a school, like Bryant School, I have contract with the school-
But is the school district gonna pay any of the one eighteen?
Yeah, I guess that's my question. What, what would that be if you were writing the twenty-eight E agreement?
Well, they, they got, with a, you know, they roughly have, you know, maybe two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the work showing on their property. Now, we need to sit down with them to make sure that that's what they wanna do, and that's how they wanna move forward, and that's why in the memo I gave the option, I can redo, or eliminate those fees, and have the school district hire me directly to do work on their property. If it, you know, causes some uncertainty of, you know, having the city upfront all the fees, and then get reimbursed by the school later.
Well, that's why I asked. I, I mean, I would agree with the mayor that I would, I would've thought we'd had a twenty-eight E agreement initially, in the beginning, instead of, but-
Part of my services is to create that twenty-eight E-
Yes.
And the exhibits, and work through both parties to make sure it's, it's workable, and also work through each attorneys on each side, and go through the board and the council to get all that determined.
So out of the one eighteen, if that's the right figure, what would you, again, determine would be appropriate for the school district to reimburse the city?
I had roughly twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and we're comfortable that that probably is exactly how it'll turn out? I mean-
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the direction we will head as we meet and work out the scope and finalize. I mean, that concept that he's prepared, I mean, there's gonna be more detail to it.
Sure.
But, yeah, so as we go through that, and obviously, you'll see the twenty-eight E agreement as we present it.
Okay.
Is this gonna be similar to the prior twenty-eight E agreement?
It's, it's similar to all the old twenty, or the former twenty-eights, except the school takes the lead on those projects, and they upfront all the costs for me to design city streets, and then ultimately, it gets bid, and the city reimburses the school. So this, this is just a reverse-
Yep.
Is really what it is, and, and this is much smaller than what we've done on a lot of the older school projects, as far as numbers. I mean, with all the new schools, we end up reconstructing four or five blocks, that ends up to be in a half a million dollars of reimbursement that goes from city to school.
I'm humoring you.
You are?
Yeah, I'll humor you a year later, so you can, you're talking to the school district.
The item today before the council is a motion, if there's a favorable vote, staff would have the authority to put it back on for a vote on the approval of the agreement. So today is just direction for staff to place it back on for an actual vote.
Okay. Well, I'd hope we'd get some sort of a preliminary look at the twenty-eight E agreement before we approve the contract then, so you've got a couple weeks, 'cause we don't meet next week, right?
Right. There's no meeting next Monday, so-
We have a motion on this?
You probably could have that in a couple of weeks, couldn't you?
We don't meet the fifth day.
A draft of the twenty-eight E.
Um, I could, sure.
So I'm abstaining on because of the, I didn't see, I didn't realize last time, I thought it was truly a city project.
Well, it was at that point.
And it wasn't involving the school district to the extent that your memo had outlined. And maybe I missed that, Glenn, in a prior email, I apologize if I did, but I thought it was just strictly a city project. I don't know what the rest of you thought, but I, that sure wasn't clear to me the last time this came up, so.
At that point, it was, 'cause there's no twenty-eight E yet.
It was strictly city.
At that point.
Yeah.
Once there's a twenty-eight E, then it's a joint project.
There was an existing twenty-eight E that expired, I believe, two years ago.
Right, it went for about ten years.
Yes.
I just think this is a good project to, a good opportunity to fix some driveways, some circulation issues, some skew angles, you only get one shot at this.
Sure, I understand that, but I agree with, with Dan that I thought it was just a city street that we were extending down, and I didn't realize we were gonna be doing all that other work.
Yeah, and when we put the RFP together, we didn't know the extent of the impacts on the properties, so as we evaluated that and scoped it out, that's when we determined the true nature of what was needed.
It's, it's, it's close up there when, where the school is and coming down.
Yeah.
And I thought we were approving the contract tonight, so thank you, I appreciate that, and that, that makes it a little easier for me. Nicole, I probably should abstain then, shouldn't I, since it's tying into the district, and Brian's gonna be working on the twenty-eight E and-
Councilman Moore, you're stating you'll abstain for a conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest.
Two.
Well, but you raised a, a good point, though, Mayor, and I think, I think it can be addressed by DGR.
Yep, we're gonna do three, zero, yeah, three, zero, two. Let, let's hold on miracle for just a minute, if there's any citizens, that way they don't have to sit through the presentation. Are there any citizens that wanna be heard first? Come forward if there are.
This is particularly on what you're talking about, but I saw in the paper Saturday that you are backing the switch to odd-even- that you are backing the switch to odd even parking days. First of all, my name is Shirley McLeod, and that's M.C., capital L.E.O.D., 2510 Isabella Street. But, you know, in years past, and it's been quite a few years, that we used to have to do the odd even parking. When did we quit doing that, and why are we just now thinking about doing it again?
I think after I left the last time. They haven't done it since then.
Yeah, I know. But, I mean, it's been a lot of years ago that we used to have to do that.
I, I think that, let me just explain the, in defense of the management here, they feel like we haven't done it for so long that our citizens won't quite understand that, and we haven't done it for quite a while.
I know, I'm an, I'm an old timer in Sioux City, so, I mean, I understand the laws.
Anyway, I, I think that we hopefully won't get any more snow this year.
Oh, I know, I do too.
But I do believe, I don't know about the rest of council, I believe, I know Pete does agree, because he told me he did, that this.
Well, he should, but being on the former police officer.
Right, this next year, this, this next year, we need to, before fall, in the fall, educate our people what we mean by odd even parking, so there's nobody's excuse they don't know. And I, you know, I think, I have in my notes, I think the staff did a great job, don't get me wrong, but they could have done a much better job.
Definitely.
If we'd have had odd even parking. And so I think, you know, in the future, hopefully next year, it would, I believe it saves the city money because you make a lot less passes through the neighborhood, and you'll get a lot less complaints of, when you go through and you dump on the snow on a sidewalk three times, you'll get less complaints because you might be able to do it two times, you know, you'll go through the first time, open it, and you'll go through then and do it. So I think there's, will be some discussion about that, and I think even the staff probably supports it, but they want to make sure that the citizens understand that, so.
Well, I think it'd be a great idea if you would consider it again.
I would too.
We met last week, I believe it was on either Wednesday or Thursday to discuss that, and we discussed the idea of going, of implementing even odd. It was staff's recommendation that you don't do that mid-cycle. It does take some education, and we're committed to developing a, a snow policy that we'll then implement in the fall probably of next year, that does a good job of educating how that will work, when it will work, and how it will be enforced.
Okay, okay, that was just my comment. I thought it was that way, that we should be, still be doing it, so.
I, I would agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Anyone else? All right, we're going to go to the Miracle Field.
I would like to introduce Kevin Niekard of the Miracle Field. He's been a great partner to the Parks and Recreation Department, and he's got an update for you on his project, where they are and where they're going.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Thank you for your time. Kevin Niekard, 2003 Greenbrier Court. Good to see some familiar faces again. I just want to thank you guys, and Matt, and Angel, and everybody who's been just a tremendous support through the project. So just to recap a little bit, this whole project started in August of 2003, in June of 2000, or 2013, excuse me, in August of 2014, we received our 501(c)(3) and then started the fundraising process. In September of 2015, we opened, we had opening day, many of you were there, so thank you very much for that. And Phase 1 included the baseball field, the playground, and then the concession stand and restroom. That was about a $1.1 million project. We received $330,000 from the city for the restroom and concession stand. Almost 10% of the project was in-kind donations, so we were very excited about that as well. And we were able to raise 1.1 million, so we actually have about 15,000 left that we can put into an endowment. We did run a, a baseball and kickball league in the fall for both adults and children with disabilities. Over 50 kids and adults participated, and it was just a great start to something new and people to get to understand what the, what the Miracle League is all about. Probably more exciting is the use of the playground. I don't know if you've been out there, it's busy at night. We went out in the second week of December to take down some equipment, and there's about 20 people out there saying, do not take the equipment down, we're going to use it. If, if the snow is off, we'll get and use it, so it's still up. So we couldn't be more excited about the use that it has to this point. Coming up in the spring and summer, we're very excited. We're working with Parks and Recs, they're going to have the facility two nights a week to run adult kickball and wiffle ball leagues. We're going to use it three nights on Sunday and then two days for Miracle League events. We've already have two special events that are booked out there. One is going to be a kickball tournament for another not-for-profit, and the other is someone wants to do an Easter egg hunt out there. So we're very excited about the usage of the facility thus far. So just to share some pictures, and as we go through the pictures, the one thing I would ask you to, to look at is the smiles. That's what this is about, is providing opportunities for people with disabilities to, to be able to have something that they consider their own. So this is Tasha, who threw out the opening pitch, and that says it all right there. Young lady, significant disabilities, just happens to be my sister, but you see the smile, and that's what, again, what this project is all about. This is again, this is one of our key components of the whole project was integration, people with disabilities and non-disabled. And this is a swing on the playground, the young lady in the middle has some disabilities, the two on the outside have no disability, so we're creating that opportunity of integration.
Extremely important, isn't it Kevin?
That's incredible. And, and not just for the kids with disabilities, it's for the others. That's where the learning happens, and it breaks down social barriers and economic barriers and everything else. This was probably one of the highlights of the opening day, was the involvement of the colleges. Dorit College, Northwestern College, Mornington, Edbryer Cliff had baseball and softball players out there, and this has kind of become our picture for what this looks like. Again, that little guy with the biggest smile in the world. Don't need any words. Okay, so that was Phase 1. Here to talk about Phase 2, the, the other core component of this whole thing was excellence. We weren't just going to do a project, we were going to do a project that was demonstrated excellence in everything, because I really believe excellence attracts excellence, and obviously the donors believe the same thing. This will be the splash pad. This is a cement structure that will have the baseball field concept painted into it. It's very much like a sprinkler system. So the far left corner, the young man on the red pole, we will set the timer, we will run it from 10:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night, or whatever it is, we'll run it for, set it for 15 to 20 minutes, and anybody can come by in the park, hit that, and it's going to run for whatever the designated time is. You can set it for different sections to come on, or it can all come on at once and run the entire time. Home plate and second base are water cannons, baseball again, but they'll shoot water out. First and third are bases, and you can see the different features of it. Back in the corner, which would be the left field corner, you'll see a better picture, but it's a, a playstation for people, again, in wheelchairs or able by just to play in the water as well. So next picture, Matt, please. This gives a little, this is the left field corner there, that you can see that structure. Next. And the final one. And this is the current structure, this is an aerial view, the baseball field, the playground, and in the dirt just south of the playground is where the splash pad will be located. This Phase 2 is about $197,000 project. I really believe it'll probably cost us about $175,000 with in-kind gifts. Premier Bank Card in the dunes has stepped forward as the title sponsor, so we're very excited about that. We've raised about $70,000 to date on the project. All of the utilities were brought to the site, so we won't have to disrupt, goes on the splash pad, so that's pretty much a fixed cost. So we'll have to get our in-kind through the cement and some other things. We have about 60 potential sponsors identified, eight grants identified, and our intention is not to go back to anybody who, of the 220 people who supported the Phase 1 of the project, so we're very excited about that.
What if they want you to?
Pardon?
What if they want you to?
That, that's a good question, because especially when we get into the next part of this with the golf, that there's people who are very interested in that part of it. I won't approach them, if they come and approach us, we'll certainly.
You can approach the chamber because we met with them today.
What's that, Bob?
I said you can approach the chamber because we met with them today when they were saying about your project. I said, well, you got another one that they might be, you might be coming to talk about.
Yeah, yeah. So we will certainly take anybody's donations. The third is just, it just kind of came up probably in the last six months, just thinking of mini-golf, and, and someone in a wheelchair cannot mini-golf. And so out beyond left field, we still have some land out there, and we want to, we want to build a nine-hole mini-golf course that would be connected by cement every hole, and we'll have borders, and then it'll just be a lip where they can transfer from one hole to the next and go that way. We'll also have a putting green out there, so that again, they can just get out and, be a part of that. And again, you know, we think of young people, but I had a good discussion with Alex Walker last week, and he said, you know, or Alex Waters, I'm sorry, that so many first dates are golfing or mini-golf or something like that, he goes, I've never been able to do that. So he was extremely excited about this and will help us in designing what that area looks like. We'll also build the shade structure out in left fields, so again, someone could watch golf, or they could be watching the baseball field at all. That's about a $72,000 project. We will not start that until we've completed the fundraising for the splash pad, because that's always been our promise as Phase 2.
But we have to be obviously taking out trees and stuff to do that, right?
No, we will not take out any trees, we'll build around the trees. We think that's what makes it really special as well.
Now, where are the bathrooms in relation?
So to the, to the right of that current, to the east side, and that is, it's, it's about to the soccer property line, that most, it's all built on ours, but it's very close to the soccer line, and we will share that facility with soccer.
Sometimes it's nice to have a changing facility close to, you know, splash pad type facility.
Yes, yep. And, and, you know, the, the playground has created great integration, the splash pad will create even more. When you think of all those sweaty little soccer kids running around out there, and when they're done, and they can run right over there and get wet, and with our kids over there too, we're really excited about that. So I'm very excited, I think Phase 1 has, has really met some of the goals of the integration and providing a great opportunity where people can own this. We have, just in the fall, we had people travel from Cherokee and from Wayne on a weekly basis to participate, so we think we're branching out. And we had a, a young lady who hadn't played baseball for 30 years be able to come and play baseball again. So anyway, I, we're really excited about where we're at, we're excited about this next piece. And not only will I talk to the chamber, but I would also like just to propose to you guys, if, if you're interested in financially supporting this project too, and so I would just ask, make an ask that, you know, if it's 50 to 60,000 over two years to show your support, that would be great as well.
You know Kevin, it's, Matt, we should, you were looking for two splash pads, and Kevin's looking for one, it'd be nice if we could get a package deal, a quantity discount or something, I don't.
Well, I'll also tell you that Phase 1 came in on time and under budget.
It did.
So, yes, and so we will, we're excited that we think we'll have over $100,000 in endowment. And we've worked very closely with the city of deeding these properties back to the city. So, yeah, we're.
Kevin, here is Premier Bank Card doing it, and Sanford's not asking for his name to be on it?
At this point, I'm, I'm working hard exactly what they want for their name, if it's Premier Bank Card and Premier Bank, but Sanford has not come up at all yet.
Okay, well, I'm not as pure as the rest of them, so, in the city, but.
No, they haven't, they haven't brought that up.
Well, I mean, they do name things after Premier Bank Card too, so that's good.
Yeah.
I have a question. Okay, so you have three phases here. What after that? I mean, like, compare, compare your Miracle Field to another one, someplace else.
LED video board, so we can be proud of that. I, I think most, most Miracle Fields are chain-linked fence all the way around, very few have the plaza and the blockwork that we do. Most of them now are getting the playground as well, very few have a splash pad. So I think as far as Miracle Fields, we're right up there. Omaha is building their second Miracle Field, but it, it won't have all three structures included in it. Omaha has a world-class wheelchair softball league, so that's a completely different diamond, it's a little bit bigger than ours, it's the same turf. But again, I don't think we're big enough to build something like that. I do see in time, probably a long time, because I'm getting tired of fundraising, but I do see in time that there is a need for a track or just a big turf facility for Special Olympics. You know, they just continue to grow with football and soccer and everything else. They'll use our field for practice, but if we at some point in time have a large field, that again, doesn't just have to be for wheelchairs, at that time I think it can be for.
I can tell you, me and Pete were out there for the, for the ribbit cutting, and I tell you, I, I was just lost for words. It was absolutely marvelous. I mean, just to see the kids out there and the parents and, and everybody interacting, and, and to see the, the kids without disabilities helping the kids with disabilities, you know, it's, that's what it's all about, you know? For me, you know, we have to appreciate what we have, and you know, maybe sometimes you don't have, you know, what someone else does, and, and this is how the kids can, can see and really relate to, to different facets of life. So, you know, I, I'm so impressed. I'm there for you. I, I tell you what, I just, and, and I think everybody out there in Sioux land there should maybe think about what they would like to do with this project, because it's a, it's great for everybody, it's not just for disabilities, it's, it's for everyone. So, and, and it's a great learning experience for, for the kids and for the parents too. So kudos to you, thank you so much.
Oh, I, I mean, thank you, but thi- this is such a great example of what the city and the citizens working together can do. I mean, this has not been a burden on anybody. And for me, it's been a blessing, the, the amount of time to get to meet people and, you know, get in front of you guys and share as well. So I think it's a great example of what we can do as a community when we come together.
I, I tell you, thank you, thank you so much.
Oh.
I can't tell you how much we appreciate it, I, I just think it's, just short to what we have in Sioux City.
Get more people to share your beliefs too, we can, we could use more of you.
I will, I will keep trying.
Yeah. Well, really, really appreciate it.
We'll be wrapping up the capital improvement budget when, Bob?
Into February, we'll have this on the agenda.
Into February, so with that, we're going to meet, we won't vote on it, but we'll finalize it, and then it'll be brought to a hearing.
And what's the exact date?
18.
18.
So we'll, we'll look at it, add it on February 18th.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're looking at, you're looking, you said you could look at it over a two-year period.
Yeah.
Okay.
So are you taking donations for Miracle Field, is that where they go to?
Yeah.
Okay. And then as you're fundraising, are they just, should they, like, if the press were to do something, would they mail it to, to your address, is that?
5601, everything goes to my work address at church.
Okay, so that's 5601.
Sandro Drive.
Okay.
You know, this might be a crazy idea, but have you ever thought about doing a GoFundMe?
Yeah, we actually have one, and.
Oh, you do?
Nobody used it, so.
Well, you know what, maybe get it out there a little bit, because I, I bet you that if people realize, it's so easy.
Yeah.
I mean, it is easy to, you know, to, you know, put money on it, so, yeah.
Why don't you get that going for me tonight?
Yeah, I will.
All right, that's what I'm talking about.
I'll give you the first check.
Well, it's a credit card deal, but the GoFundMe thing is, you just.
I don't have any credit cards.
Use your credit card, and, yeah, you put down what you donate, that's, you know, that's, but give me the information, and I'll put it, I'll put it out there on Facebook.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else to be heard? Team, now we'll go to council.
I was just going to mention, but I've got the answer, I sent an email to Sandy before the meeting, that public, there's a public meeting on Thursday at 6:00. On Sandy's meetings list, it said Council Chambers, and on the posting, it said Trimble Methodist on 27th Street, and it is at Trimble Methodist Church on 27th Street, so it's, it's not at the council chamber, I just wanted to clarify that. And then I noticed there's a neighborhood meeting for the Rose Hill Neighborhood Meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 in Council Chambers to discuss the amending Title 25 for the, to incorporate design standards in the historic, but I, I didn't see that posted, so I, so that's probably, I didn't know if anybody else was planning on going or not.
It was on our list, I thought.
Um, but, but in the postings, I think that. Um, but, but in the postings, I think that Sarah sent out last week when she does the council homework, I, I didn't see one for the Rose Hill one, so.
You did not? I don't know.
It's probably too late to do it?
No, I can do it if you want.
What time is the meeting at?
Seven o'clock tomorrow night, I think, here in the Council Chambers.
It could be posted tonight. We need 24 hours notice.
Okay.
Are you intending to go?
Yeah, I, I think I'd like to go and listen to any concerns they have about why they should or should not have the standards, the design standards, so.
I want to go, but as I shared with the city manager, I'm kind of up in the air about it because it's a, a staff neighborhood type thing. And then when we come, it changes the.
Dynamics?
Dynamic.
Well, then maybe we shouldn't post it and.
No, 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 I think you should, no, I think you should. I would never want to discourage a council member from going to a meeting like that.
But you may be right. Maybe one or two would be better than a.
Yeah, so if you're going, I may, I may not, but I can't go. I don't know. Mayor, were you planning to go or?
I don't think so this time of year.
Yeah, Keith. Were you planning to go to the, the Rose Hill? Well, maybe I will go.
Yeah, then you don't need to post it.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be posted.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, I've got three quick things. First, I want to thank Ed Pickens and our Phil Service crew for the great job they did in blizzard conditions. And I think a lot of people out there understood that we had bad weather, but they didn't understand how bad. A blizzard is considered a blizzard when we have 34 or 35, maybe 40 mile an hour winds. The plows go through, they clean the streets off and they're backed up again, you know, just because of the, of the drifts and all that. So they did the best they could and they did a great job. They were two shifts, 12-hour shifts for I don't know how many days. So thank you guys for that. Appreciate it. Wednesday, we have our budget hearings from eight to 4:30. So anybody that wants to listen to our budget hearings on cable 56, you sure can. And then on Thursday, we have coffee with council at Harvey's from 8:30 to 9:30. So anybody want to talk to us, come on out to Harvey's Thursday, 8:30. That's it.
Okay. Just a reminder, we do not have a council meeting next Monday, the 15th. City Hall will be closed till four o'clock Thursday morning.
Wow.
So council members do not get, well, at least this council member doesn't get.
I bought a house on a priority too, so I'm, I'm getting done way before you.
Well, I should have had you pick me up. Anyway, so we, we transferred power from Mayor Pro Tem, Rhonda was Mayor Pro Tem that morning because I thought anybody that goes out and buys donuts for the Weather Channel people, and she's out in that terrific weather doing a great interview, so thank you. And you even said they were treated very well in Sioux City.
Yeah, I tell you what, Jim Cantori and his, um, his crew were absolutely, they were so nice and very appreciative. And, and not only I gave them donuts and coffee, but I know that they come and go down on Gordon Drive, they gave them pizza and pop. When I was there, the paramedics drove by, they gave them cups for coffee. The fire department, Joe Rodriguez was driving by there, the city crews were there. I mean, they tornadoed where we were leaving, so you know, we could go visit. So they, they really, really do appreciate that and.
I'm going to give him a football then I'm going to.
Oh, that's right. Anthony Payne also gave them a, a bandit's football.
I'm going to have to charge him for that.
And, hey, I want to tell you something, they were impressed and I think they might have been even tossing it around out there.
Make sure you answer this yes, but you would have done the same for our local TV stations as well.
Of course.
If they were out in that blizzard weather.
I saw you outside freezing too.
Yeah, well, listen, we have donuts here for you right now.
Rhonda would, would have got donuts for you, Robert.
You betcha.
Every one of you.
Anyway, I tell you, the Weather Channel, okay, and this is how much I do not watch the Weather Channel. I had no clue who Cantori was.
You're giving donuts to the wrong people when you show up.
Well, I, you know what, I was just being friendly. I figured.
My wife could have told you. She watches that channel like hours on end.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, boring.
Would I go, I mean, I don't know how long you can watch that channel.
That's probably why I don't watch the Weather Channel.
That's all I have, Mayor. Let's move on.
Guess he's not coming back.
I can't wait to get all the phone calls about how people that watch the Weather Channel are boring now according to.
No, yeah, I mean, well, I used to be, tell me that their brother's Kirby in California. I said, really? I guess it is a nation thing, nationwide thing.
I did get calls and texts the second you were on there, so.
Jeez, yeah.
A lot of people saw it. I had two things brought up. One was at our, I believe it was the chamber meeting. It might've been one of the initiative meetings. I can't remember which one. But odor issues at our lift stations, they feel like we're not keeping up to our end of the bargain. I know we are looking at negotiations with our odor control vendor as to getting those taken care of, but can we fast track those a little faster, I guess? Because we did make a commitment, what?
Four years ago.
Four years ago on odor control in the city and haven't, I guess, you know, I felt hard pressed to defend the city's position after all this time as, as to how we're moving. And I know we're, we've gone through changes in staff, obviously, but we, we have not been good about getting that done, so.
Our Barbie service is on schedule.
Uh, the other one that was brought up to me, two different residents in Rose Hill, just in, in conversation, 14th to 16th Summit in Grandview, that area. Almost all the driveways are on one side of the street and, you know, when the major snowfalls are plowed, obviously they just push to both sides. But if in the future they could push all to the one side where there are no driveways and next to nobody parks, they'd, they'd appreciate that again. So I don't, I hate to give drivers different, you know, sets of rules and parameters for each neighborhood, but if they do it every year, maybe it wouldn't be so tough to train.
Unless we do the even odd thing.
An even next year would solve that and that change it?
It would solve it.
That it? Let the record show, it was you that said my wife was boring, not me.
No, I didn't.
I gotta go home tonight.
No, wait a minute. I did say she was boring, so the Weather Channel seemed to be a little boring, I said.
For those of you that.
I love your wife. She's a nice girl.
Haven't been there, we need to do some, some, well, I don't know if we need to do anything, but that Children's Museum is probably one of the, Miracle Field is, but that Children, it's the same type of quality of life deal that is going to have such a positive impact on our community. If you haven't been there, it is worth a walk through. It's incredible, the interaction, the interactive activities that kids can have in there. So that's really a great addition and the ladies that got behind that early need to be congratulated for that.
It took them like 10 or 12 years to get it.
At least. I think I might've been still in office when they first proposed that idea.
Twelve years ago, she said.
Okay. Anyway, and I don't, and I do think our crews did a great job, Bob, but we had, we do have to develop a system because it's not fair to people to go out and do their sidewalks three and four times. So I would hope if we have another snowstorm, I don't want to be critical of the staff because of sidewalks. And that's the only complaint I really had, other than why isn't my street done? Well, your street's not done because, you know, school bus routes and all those other things take a priority. And when you explain that we have a priority system, people understand that. But, but it is a real problem for some elderly people to have to do those sidewalks time and time again. So I'd hope that somehow we'd slow them down after we get them going.
Okay.
And, and I don't know, I, I just want to today just recognize our police, that we had another officer that was shot. And I sometimes think in this community, as in most communities, we take our police officers for granted. And, and I think that we've learned as a community, it's a very dangerous job. And I, I hope we never have situations that happen another, I think we have a very professional police department. And, but I think we need to make sure that as a council and as a community, they understand how appreciated they are today. So with that, unless you have something, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Breton.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi.
Reddick.
Hi.
Stack.
Hi.
Capron.
Hi.